I have to get it recorded. On this, the fourth day of April. If everybody can please stand and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while we have so many people here, I just want to make one announcement before we get into the agenda. The Free Landfill Days at the Carbon County Landfill are coming up. They're in conjunction with Price City's Cleanup Week, so help spread the news to those that need to get out and take their stuff to the landfill. That will be held the fourteenth through the twenty-third. Those are the days of the Free Landfill. Daniel, did you hear that?
April.
Yeah, of April. First item on the agenda is presentation of Carbon County Employee of the Month. Rose.
I'd ask these gentlemen to come up with me because they're the ones that did the nomination for Jeremy Humes is our Employee of the Month, and I would just like to, you know, take a minute and thank Jeremy. I don't know how many people really realize what the Attorney's Office does for the county, but it's phenomenal. And Jeremy's very much an instrumental part of that. And, you know, he's a wonderful employee. He's a wonderful attorney, and I just want to say thanks, and I'm going to turn the time over to these guys.
So I'll kind of echo what Rose said. We've been involved with some pretty significant cases with our county attorney's office this past year and a half, two years, and I just want to emphasize, especially with the double homicide case that we just had, Jeremy ran that case, prosecuted that case successfully. And the enormity of managing a case like that while still managing all of the other cases, I think, is worth a commendation, and we just want to say how much we appreciate working with him and the county attorney's office. But that homicide case, 24/7 for a lot of months, and he smashed it out of the park. Very proud to be a part of that and a part of his team on that, so.
And he does a fantastic job, and it's not just a nine-to-five job. He answers calls all through the night for search warrants and as well as the other attorneys. There's a lot of work that goes unseen and not on office hours, so thank you.
A lot of people need to understand, in law enforcement, we get a huge amount of our direction and how we behave and present cases through direction from the county attorney's office. So it's a hand-in-hand thing, and without that, we wouldn't be able to do our jobs hardly at all. So we want to recognize Jeremy for that, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ollie.
I want to say amen.
Do you want to add anything, Gene?
Anybody who's worked with Jeremy knows how innovative he is. He's just, does a fabulous job in his office. Not only a great prosecutor and a great lawyer, but he's innovating on IT matters, all kinds of things. Like the officers were saying, oftentimes I come to work and I'll be chatting about something, I find out that Jeremy spent last night doing search warrants, oftentimes multiple things. Can't think of enough, he just does a fabulous job.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Jeremy, thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
It's a team effort, no question about it. Couldn't do without all of these guys, so.
Thank you.
Item number two on the agenda is approval of minutes. Commissioners, we have one set of minutes from the February 21st, 2018. I was excused, having been told to stay home and not share what I was having at the time.
I didn't have any changes. I would make a motion to approve those minutes.
I as well don't see any changes. I'll second that motion.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number three, open sealed bids for weed and mosquito abatement chemicals. Seth. Commissioners, the first bid we have is from Steve Regan Cole. And there is a list of seventeen chemicals and their individual prices. I don't believe you want me to read them all in.
No, I'd suggest we do as we've done in the past, open them, acknowledge them, and turn them over for review and awarding.
Next we received, bid from, I don't know. Next is from IFA, Price. And that was the exterior envelope that came with it. The next is from Crop Production Services. The next bid is from Adapco. The next is from Target Specialty Products. Looks like they've only bid on a handful of the ones that we requested. And the last is from Univar.
Univar?
Yeah. Which is U-N-I-V-A-R. Those are all of the bids for weed and mosquito chemicals. And those were advertised that we could take. It's not all or nothing. It goes out per individual chemical.
Yep. I'll make a motion to acknowledge those six vendors and turn those over to the Road Shop and Weed and Mosquito for review and then awarding of the appropriate companies.
Waiting to come back to award?
No, not in my motion anyway.
No. So we have a motion. Any further discussion?
I'll second that motion.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Item number four, open sealed bids for 2018 paint striping approximately 1 million linear feet of Carbon County Roads, Road Department. Seth.
I like mine. It's pretty. It's dull. Stop buying stuff. I don't have to stop opening envelopes.
The first is from Premier Striping. And it's for seven cents linear foot. So it'd be a total of $70,000. The next is from Straight Stripe and Painting.
Straight Stripe?
Yep. Out of St. George. And their bid is for 6.45 cents, so 64,500. And the last is from Innovative Marketing, Innovative Marking Systems at eight cents a foot, or $80,000.
Just the three?
Yeah.
Commissioners, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we acknowledge the three bids, pointing out that Straits Stripe from St. George had the lowest bid. And turn that over to the Road Department for decision.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number five, public hearing on request for change to the Carbon County zoning map on parcel 02-0391 from R-1 20K to R-1 8K for Dale Wilson and Barbara Wilson. Hello, welcome.
Hello.
Please state your name for the record and go ahead and address.
I'm Dale Wilson. Just trying to get a little strip of property that was missed somehow. It's in my mother's name, which is Barbara. That's all I'm trying to do is get that little strip changed into my name and rezone her house because it changes his zoning.
So actually, Commissioners, I think he already has that changed into his name. The problem, though, is that having done that, it makes his, well, maybe it hasn't been done yet, but...
No.
Okay, you're waiting for approval for this first, right?
Right.
If he were to do that, that would leave his mother's house too, the lot that his mom's house sits on would be too small for the current zone. So he needs to go down to a lower, they're both residential zones, though, and he just needs to go down to a smaller residential zone that would allow it. So the present use is already consistent with that smaller-sized residential zone, and it was, this received a positive recommendation at the Planning Commission.
As I looked at it on the map, some of that sliver entailed some buildings that you already have, and only parts of the farm buildings that you already have on that property. So it would be good to clear that up so that the buildings are not on two parcels.
Yeah, I don't know how it ended up that way, but that's what we're...
So Commissioners, do we have a...
We need a public hearing first on this.
Oh, we have a, yep. With that, do you have any more information to share?
No, that's Ollie.
Okay, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak to this, please come to the mic and state your name for the record, and we'll open that public hearing at 4:43. These are the tough public hearings. Seeing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? Seeing that nobody wants to jump up and speak to this, we'll go ahead and close this at 4:44. Oh.
I'm just right down below Dale, and when I built my house...
Will you state your name for the record?
Joe Sacco.
Okay.
And when I built my house there, the surveys on that ground are all wrong. And I had to go from my house there to help her. The amount of ground between the fences is right, but everybody owns 12 or 15 feet of everybody else's ground on that side. The other side's like 32, 33 feet. Okay, so I understand where this problem comes from with Dale, and there's going to be more of that up along through there, too. So, I mean, it just helps straighten things out.
It does, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner, you close the public hearing. I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and move that we approved the zone change from R-1, R-1-20K to R-1-8K. And I'll also echo Joe's comments that this helps clean up boundary lines and helps our area from overall planning correct a lot of parcels. As Joe mentioned, there's several areas. I know where I live, everybody's more like 45 feet off. And so stuff like this helps solidify some lines and helps create better verified anchors to go from. So appreciate you coming and getting this taken care of.
All right, thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is...
Oh, we need a second on that motion.
Yes, we do.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number six is review and possible adoption of a change to the Carbon County zoning map on parcel 02-0391 from R-1-20K to R-1-8K for Dale Wilson and Barbara Wilson as ordinance number 493.
So Commissioner, that's the motion that I made was for, I guess, the next line item. The first line item was just for the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yeah, so you just made, you just voted on this number six right here. So I think you're fine to go ahead to the next.
We just need to be sure that the ordinance number is...
Ordinance number is recorded with that motion.
Because there wasn't an ordinance number attached to that. But that's fine. Okay. And I didn't know if they needed to be handled separately.
They should be, but that's all right. I think it was clear enough what you were doing, that the motions were made separately. So I think you're fine.
Okay. Item number seven, review and possible approval of a new interlocal agreement for the southeastern Utah District of Health Department. Christian, do you want to handle this? I don't think we're quite ready.
Let me show you. I have a couple of suggestive changes I'd like you to consider. Some of it's just cleaning up some language. This document shows most of them. There's a section in here, before I get to the major one, let me just hit a couple of the smaller ones. I think I would suggest in Section 4, Paragraph 2, there's a part about having Commissioners serve. And I think I understand what the draft reads, but I think we can make it clearer by adding language that says, "The commission of each of the counties shall appoint one of their commission members to serve on the board. In the event that the designated appointee is unable to attend a board meeting, the commission or council may appoint another of its commission or council members to attend the meeting in his or her stead and to vote in the stead of the absent member. The parties agree that the designation of a substitute commission or council member to attend and vote at the meeting is an administrative function which may be delegated to any of the members of the respective county commissions and councils or that may be determined by each council's own, county's own process." In other words, I think the point of this is to make sure, because this meeting often involves travel, it's good to have one person designated as the point man, but if you need to send, what often happens is each county needs to send somebody else to that meeting. And so my goal with this language is to make it very clear that if the designated person can't attend, then the commission can send somebody else who can vote in the stead of that person. And to make it clear that each commission has the right to decide how they will appoint that person. And frankly, as I look at the Open and Public Meetings Act, designating someone to attend that meeting from time to time is really just an administrative function because you already have a seat on that board. All you're doing is making sure you have county representation at that meeting. So I find that you don't need to have a formal vote or a formal meeting to designate someone to attend in the stead of the appointed member if that appointed member can't come. I think you can simply and formally make that decision since you've already, will have already entered into this agreement and appointed someone. Then the voting clause, I just have put that voting shall be by the appointed members of the board in attendance at the meeting or by the member of the county commission or council attending the meeting in the stead of an absent appointed member of the county commission or council. In other words, want to make it very clear that whoever attends from the county commission or the county council, as the case may be, has the right to vote if they're there. The other thing I think that needs to be looked at, Casey, you and I talked about on Page 5, there's a part there about reports where the typed number conflicts with the numerical number. So that's on Page 5, still in Section 4, Subparagraph J, Reports. It says, "No later than 30 days." So the number in there should be changed from 90 to 30 days, I believe. Finally, Commissioners, in Section 8 on Page 6, there's a section about termination and dissolution. It's, there's the red, and this is Section 8. There's red language there that's been newly added. It says, "A county that is considering withdrawal shall initiate the issue escalation resolution procedure, Attachment A, at least 150 days prior to December 1st of any year." Well, the statute allowing for dissolution or withdrawal from the board or from the Health Department says you have, you have to give that notice 90 days prior to the end of the year. Requiring 150 days seems excessive to me. So I would think you would, if you have, if you have to give that notice 90 days, I think most of the things that you're going to do in that time period can be done within 30 days. So, but that's really your call, not mine. I would suggest something more like 120 days because you're already, that's really four months before the end of the year, and that's really pinching you, you know? By statute, you can only withdraw from the Health Department at the end of a year. You can't just up and decide in the middle of the year you're going to leave. So you have to withdraw, a withdrawal only is effective as of December 31st, plus you have to give that extra 90 days. So given that, if we're going to have other procedures to try and resolve something before giving that notice, seems like requiring those to be done within 150 days prior to December 31st just about makes it impossible to withdraw if an issue arises late in the year. So that would be my thought there. The big item, I think, that you need to decide, Commissioners, is your membership. How the membership of the Board of Health should be, what should be the makeup of it. There was discussion earlier that Carbon County would have three board members, and the other counties would have two board members. That was, in fact, those were some of the conditions, as I recall, that were laid out with Carbon County agreeing to stay, is that there had to be some flexibility there, or at least discussion. And my recollection is that the other counties, at least Grand County, in fact, did agree that they would agree to accept two seats on the board.
Yeah, in fact, in that meeting, both counties were in accord.
I think that's right. I was there and I recall that. So you've already established that, and they had agreed to that. They've taken some steps to address some of the concerns we have. And so the draft, as it stands, is nine members, but certainly wouldn't be a new idea to float the idea of having a 3-2-2 membership. Commissioner Hopes, I handed you the allocation sheet. I don't know if that got on everybody's draft because I know it wasn't on Seth's draft. But there's an allocation, there's a discussion on the very, very last page. Did I hand that to you, Commissioner Hopes, or did I hand that to...
Yes, you gave it to me.
Okay, so that indicates how the, that Carbon County, it proposes that Carbon County would pay, I believe, 43 percent, 43 percent of the Health Department's budget. Grand County, I think, is 29 percent. I didn't reprint it, and I think Emery County's 26 percent. Does that look right?
27.
Emery County, you have 23, 23 and a half.
For which one?
Oh, well, you have...
That's the environmental column. That's the environmental column.
The totals are 37.6 for Carbon, 23.5 for Emery, and 38.9 for Grand on the environmental one. But if you go down, that's the number that Jake was pulling from. The totals are 43.5, 27.9, and 29.9, Carbon, Emery, and Grand.
So we pay significantly more, about 15 percent more almost than the other county, the county that's next closest to us in amount. And that's based on a new formula for determining the assessment, which includes looking not just at the population and the area in the county, which was the old formula, but population, area, and the number of establishments which have to be served by the environmental health officer, such as tattoo shops, restaurants, other places where they have to go do an inspection. So there's a new formula that's proposed in there. So, you know, if anything, I think there is some justification for you to consider the 3-2-2 split with the other counties in that you're paying a significantly...
And that we have been, and with this formula change, we would be paying, not only have we been paying more, but with this new formula, we'd be paying even more than we have been.
So I think those are important points to consider. I'm not, as you know, I also stand in as the attorney for the board itself, so I'm not making a recommendation to you as to how you should do that other than to point out, here's where the discussion has been, and here's where the grounds have been proposed in the past. So I think it's your decision, certainly, obviously, it's your decision to make as to how you'd like to see that written out.
Commissioner Hopes, I would like to see us in Section 4, reinsert the 3-2-2 membership, three from Carbon, two from Grand, two from Emery, just based on the statistics and the amounts paid. I think that that's still a fair solution. It does not give us a majority if there was a vote between the seven members. And also, I like what Christian had talked about with the terms and the voting. But in Item F, if we insert the numbers to be the 3-2-2, we would need to change the majority, the quorum, which would need to decrease from the five to make a quorum with those numbers that would work.
The only other thing I think that was not, or has not yet been mentioned was the requirement within the interlocal agreement that with some degree of frequency, we do visit the Health Department sites in the various counties, or we go to the various counties specifically. But that was one of the agreed-upon items in our meeting when we were all three counties getting together to try and formulate this interlocal agreement.
Do you think that still stands as one of those things that...
So I couldn't find it in here.
Isn't it in Paragraph E? You're talking about locations of meetings?
Yes.
I think it's on Page 4, Paragraph E, meetings.
There it is, yes.
Under Section 4. And it does say, "At least one meeting each year will be held in Price, Castledale, and Moab."
And that goes in... And that goes in line with the voting amongst the commission being able to say currently, I'm the commissioner who's assigned, but I have to attend another meeting, or I'm unable to travel that day, whatever, you know, Commissioner Hope or Commissioner Potter could step in and still have a, a vote at the decision table. I, I find that to be a valid importance, whereas the travel requirement is increased now with that one, at least one visit in each county requirement.
What about the three-day notice on that, on those meetings, too? Is that a statute, or whatever? I, I mean, all of a sudden, you call a meeting on close to a weekend, I don't think we've addressed how that really works in that section.
You know, I'd, I'd have to look at that and see if that's, I haven't, I can't tell you. I don't know if that's by statute, or if that's just a proposal here.
By a proposal. The last one, then, is that termination and dissolution. I'd really like to see that hundred and fifty days go away. I think if the state statute is ninety days, I think that that should be the standard that we stand on.
Yeah, there's no reason, I agree with you, Commissioner Potter, there's no reason why we would have a lengthier process, or make it more difficult than what the state has put as a norm.
So in other words, are you, are you okay with participating in that resolution procedure, but not requiring that it be initiated?
Hundred and fifty days prior, correct.
Any sooner than the ninety days required by, by law? In other words, the, the point of that language was to require the, the counties to come together before you give the notice, right? So, you know, it was meant to make you get together and try and resolve anything before that ninety-day notice goes out. So if you don't want to participate in that at all, you could say, no, we're not going to do that, and we'll pledge in good faith to simply work with the other counties to try and resolve it. I, I think what the other county, this was proposed primarily by another county, and it was meant to get, to require the counties to meet before that ultimatum, that resolution is passed within ninety days.
But it doesn't necessarily dictate what type of meeting. In essence, it could be a Board of Health meeting where the county representatives stay after and talk.
Well, it does dictate that. It does indicate, it's, it has three levels, where first, it's to be the board chair, whoever's got the complaint, and the health officer. Level two would involve the attorney, the health officer, and the whole board. Level three would involve the county-elected officials and the health officer. So, I, I, I mean, it's kind of, in some ways, it's cumbersome, in that it's, it's fairly exacting as to how the procedure is to work. I think, I think what they were looking for is a commitment, I think it's all based around a request that there's a commitment from the counties, that before that ninety-day notice of intent to leave the district goes out, that there's going to be some discussion. And so you could even do something less formal and say, at some point, prior to those ninety days, the counties agree that they will get together to try and resolve that. But you wouldn't have to put a deadline on it. I think what they want to do is, is to try and prevent that notice from going out if there's a way that discussion can be made and, and a deal reached. The other thing to consider, though, is the fact that the statute says ninety days. So, I think the, the reason the statute says ninety days and not thirty days, or not fifteen days.
Is to give time.
Is for that same purpose. In other words, the state is saying, if you give ninety days, we're pretty sure you're gonna, within those ninety days, have discussion. And in fact, that is what happened last year, is we sent out the ninety-day notice, and it did spur discussion, and it did cause us to get together and have discussions and hammer out differences. So you, you could make the argument that that's already baked into it.
I, I think that we leave it with the ninety days, personally, because it, it does allow for ample time to have discussion.
And just remove attachment day altogether, the, the resolution.
Do away with attachment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because the ninety days really does provide that timeframe.
Okay.
The other question I had was on page six, F. It, it says, "Procedure for determining treasure that Carvin County Treasurer shall serve as the treasurer for the health department." Is this something that's already been happening, you know, Jake?
It hasn't necessarily been, it has not been designated with, it has been mentioned in, I, I believe, Christian, you can correct me.
I think Seth's the one to answer this.
But I, I believe it has only just mentioned that the hosting county would provide additional resources and support.
Okay.
Such as accounting and legal. I don't know that it actually names clerk, auditor, treasurer.
Well, in here it does, it says determining for treasure.
Talking about the prior, prior document.
Historically, Carvin County is the hosting county. They're hosted here. We receive the federal monies that come in, Medicare money and stuff like that, we hold those accounts, those are held, like all of the accounts are held by the treasurer. So she is currently, has physical custody of all those accounts, and, and we administer those for them, and they pull them out as they need them to.
Do you have auditing services as well? Do we need to include that? If we're going to include the treasurer, do we need to include the auditor, or do we just leave him out, knowing that we already do it?
So the, the way that we hold their, their funds for a couple of reasons, some of the federal requirements on those funds, we hold them, and we're the hosting agency, and then we distribute them to them. They have their own accounting staff, they're required to hold, have their own separate audit. Being a, a component unit of the county, their financials do roll up into ours at the end of the year, as people have seen, and we can request additional information, and we make them follow different policies at, at our request. And they've always been very good to do that. But no, the auditing services are not specifically, we don't have to do that. If we see a problem, we can request it.
Okay.
And I guess the question is, do we like the language where it spells it out in this proposal? Or are we fine with how it was before, where it just talked about the hosting county providing the additional resources?
If, if we're the hosting county, and we're having custody of their cash, which we're required to do, the treasurer is the person that's going to have physical custody of those funds, and I have no problem with that.
We just had the treasurer come in. We were talking about the procedures for having the treasurer serve as the treasurer for the health department, and it's new to the document, so I was wondering what the, what the change was, but apparently you've already been doing this, so.
Right, I do the deposits, I think they do their own auditing at the health department, but I do take care of the deposits.
Okay.
Okay.
So it sounds like it's just formality, then?
Yeah, I think it's fine to leave it in there, and then there's, if anybody wonders, then there it is.
Okay. Any other questions?
You'll make those changes, bring it back for approval, then?
Yes.
Well, I guess.
I think you still need a vote on that. Did you vote already?
We did not. I, I guess, are we voting on what we're gonna put to the health department as our suggestions?
Yes, well, no, well, here, you, you and the other counties are, are making this agreement. Brady Bradford from the health department has been the, has been the draftsman of this, so.
So in essence, we're not putting it to the health department, we're putting it to the other counties?
That's right.
Okay.
But we'll, but I'll send those changes along to Brady, ask him to insert those and pass those on to the other departments for their approval and consideration.
So is there an action on this then?
I think you should make a motion to, to approve those changes.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion. The motion is that we, we ask Christian to write up those changes that have been discussed in this meeting, and to address the other counties with those changes for consideration.
We have a motion?
Do we need to list them, or are we good?
I, I've got them, I know what they are.
I'll second that, then.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number eight, consideration of possible approval of a memorandum of understanding with BLM establishing cooperating, cooperating agency relationship as to preparation of fuel breaks, fuel treatments, and rangelands restoration programmatic environmental impact statements. Commissioners, I'm not sure who's addressing this one. Do we have anybody from the BLM here?
Good afternoon, I'm Stuart Bedkey, the fuel specialist for the BLM.
Okay. There was one proposed change, and I believe it was already approved by the BLM.
They did make that change and put that in the draft, that was in paragraph four-two, wherein we asked that the language refer to, refer to FLIPMA, and provide that the BLM will, to the maximum extent, consistent with federal law, strive for consistency with the cooperator, and, and the cooperator's plans and data. And they've agreed to make that change, and that's actually in there right now. And the other thing they did is they inserted all the individuals that we asked to be named as the representatives and backup representatives and so forth. So we've got, I believe we've got Commissioner Hope's in there, and as the primary one with Todd Thorne, and Jake Mellor as backup representatives. So I think everything we've asked for has been, all the changes we've asked for have been made. I don't know if you want a, an explanation as to, maybe you could provide that as to what this agreement is, is to cover.
Would, would you do that, Stuart, just so that we have it for record?
Sure, sure. With this agreement, in the, in the past, all of our historical BLM fire breaks have ended at the property boundary. With the implementation of the WRI, Utah Watershed Restoration Initiative, when we do our proposals for projects, we can now cross those, those boundaries into state or private land with their, with their approval, and then that way, the project is continuous, regardless of property ownership.
Thank you.
I, I only have one question in regards to that, and this is more of, you know, what do you think, Commissioner Hope? With you listed as the primary, specifically because you are the current chair, in six months from now, and a year from now, if you're not the chair, would you like it to list you as the primary or existing chair, or do you, do you have any thoughts on that matter?
I, I don't know that I have any specific reasons, one way or another. As far as I'm concerned, it can say current chair. Christian, do you have any recommendations there?
You know, I don't know, I think it depends, does the BLM want a, a name, or are they good with a position?
We're, we're good with a position, that's fine.
Because you could have the county commission chairman on there, and then Todd as backup. So maybe we, we'd make that change, then.
So we have me on there, simply because I have an assignment as public lands, but I think the commission chair, since it's fluid and changes all the time, I think we should identify that position.
I think there's a potential that we, we might want to add Justin Needles to that list as well. Justin, do you have something to add to that? Just being that he's our emergency manager, might be good that he's in those conversations as well.
Well, not only that, is if they're doing a, a project that's gonna cross property boundaries, with our fuels commitment that we have with forestry fire and state land, we could potentially add our money into that and make it a little bit bigger and meet, meet our commitment. And I would just, because I, that's housing emergency management, I'd like to be involved in those discussions.
So would it be okay if we took Commissioner Mellor off from that, made Justin the second one behind Todd, that would put our permanent people in? And if it's the designation of the commission chair, then you've got the county representative as far as the commission goes?
Yeah, I'd just like to be involved in those communications.
I think it's valuable to have you involved, so.
That way, we have it simplified to where just one member of the commission, the chair, we have Todd who's over public lands, and we have you.
So if we make that change, then?
I think we can make that, I, I think your, BLM is the draftsman of this, and so I, I think they may want to add those names onto it, so we probably won't sign it tonight. But I've got the, it's Sheila Lehman, right, who, so we'll email her and give her the information as to who we want on that, and I'm sure she'll get us back a final draft real quick for us to sign and get, get to you.
We, we can approve it subject to the name changes, correct?
Absolutely, sure.
Okay.
So let me make that motion, then, that we would approve that contract, or, excuse me, memorandum of understanding based on those names being changed and inserted.
Do we have a motion?
And a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number nine, consideration of possible approval of a memorandum of understanding with Price City for sponsor, sponsorship of emergency watershed protection. Commissioners, a couple years ago, when we had the flooding, the NRCS came down and did a damage survey report, they filled out DSRs, and identified multiple projects in the county. Only two of those projects were funded, one in Helper and one in Wellington. They came to us this year, and there's a possibility of all outstanding DSRs being funded, and one of those DSRs includes some work that is, that will happen in Price City, it includes the two dump gates to be improved to automate the dump gates on the canal, and some other can, channel restoration. I gotta get the wording right, channel restoration work. And this simply is like we did with Wellington, it is an understanding with Wellington that they're responsible for the twenty-five percent match, we'll pay it upfront, but they're responsible to, to reimburse the county for that, we'll pay for the costs upfront, but then the NRCS will reimburse us for those costs. So this is all new information within the last couple weeks that we've been working on. We'd like to get the money in place prior to, or the contracts in place prior to the money being allocated, because I think there's a hundred and ninety-day window, there, there's a very short time that they allocate. Soon as the money hits the bank account, you have to do all the engineering and complete the project within that. They do allow for some small extensions, but if we can complete it as quick as possible, that would be the best way to do it. So that's where this agreement comes from.
So similar to Wellington, but this would be with Price City directly?
Correct. Part of this agreement, we do have some work that will be done for the county, so not all of the twenty-five percent match will be Price City's, they will only be responsible for the work being done on their project. But some of it is for some work being done in Carvinville, and some work being done in, at the landfill where the fence was laid over due to the flooding that happened when the culverts were plugged.
Commissioners, this is essentially the same form you, you approved previously. And assuming Price City uses, their city attorney looked at this form earlier when we did the one with the Carvin Canal, he, he looked at it in a different capacity, of course, as their counsel there, but I expect that they will approve it, they may have a minor change or two, but it's essentially the same form, so we just need to, we're just waiting to hear back from Price City. Substantively, the gist of it is that it puts Price City, makes Price City the, the, we're, we're, we're the sponsoring agent, we're the fiscal agent, we're the pass-through entity, Price City selects the contractor, uses their procurement policy, they, they pay for, they pick out their technical assistants, they indemnify the county and hold the county harmless if there's any claim. So I would, I would request that if, unless you have any other concerns, that you approve it subject to any changes that, that Price City might make that are not material changes to the contract.
Okay.
Or if you want to see their changes and insist that it come back, you certainly have the right to do that. But absent anything that changes what I just talked about, I would think you could approve it.
Commissioners, I'm comfortable with Christian's recommendation. If there's, if you don't have any other opposing views on it, I'm ready to make that motion, that we do approve this contract subject to non-material changes.
Could I say something, please?
Joe, yeah, please come to the mic and state your name.
My name's Joe Sackel. When the NRCS come down, I was asked to take them around and show them a lot of these projects, okay? Whitney and Zach, I met with them down there, and we met with them people, we took them around. Well, up on the Gayditch, we went to our diversion dam, and it was washed out. However, whatever happened, I don't. However, whatever happened, I don't know. It fell through the loops, was not on. If there is more money, we up fronted $2,400 to get that diversion dam, get rocks and everything put back in. But there is work that needs to be done that we cannot do and put a cement cap on it and things like that to make sure that doesn't wash out anymore. So if there's more money coming up and there's money that can be allocated to help us up there, I would like to jump on that bandwagon and be able to get some of that.
Okay. Justin, will you make a note of that? And, and we'll, we'll call the NRCS and see if there is availability of, of adding to the DSR. I'm not, I'm not sure how those funds are able to move between. If it's not on the current DSR, I don't know that we can, we can take money from the current project if there's leftover money and do that.
And I know when I talked to Tony before, we had talked about putting this on that Carbonville DSR. And I don't think it got put on there for one way or another, but I'll definitely call Tony and follow up with that. So I think it should be able to fit in that one if we have some extra funds.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. We'll, we'll see what we can do. Will you follow up with myself or Justin on that? Thanks, Joe.
Mr. Chair, you have a motion?
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Item number ten, request for grad, grad, graduation spectacular donation for 2018. Commissioners, this is an annual thing. They come and request. I believe we give $500. With that, they buy prizes and things, incentives to keep the kids in a safe environment on graduation night.
Commissioners, you have authority under Utah Code Section 1750-303 to provide consideration to a nonprofit entity that if you find that consideration contributes to the health or welfare of your citizens. And you've made that finding for many years before. That, that's been a finding you've made as commissioners for years before even all of you were on the board. So I, I think, I don't have any legal concern with that.
Okay. We also budgeted for this expense as well?
I'll make a motion to approve a $500 donation to Graduation Spectacular.
And I'll second that motion gladly.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Item number eleven, appoint board member to the district council on aging. Commissioners, I'm not sure, this is part of the southeastern Utah AOG. I think this is more of a formality. We, in the past couple of years, we had a new director of this program come into the office and she's been going back through and trying to formalize this council on, this, excuse me, the district council on aging. We have our own council on aging for Carbon County because we run separate from the AOG. This is to help them and help us fulfill our requirements to get the federal money. This is just a formality. We have one person that has been serving on that board and would like to continue. This puts them in for a three-year term. Christian, do you have any concerns with this?
I don't.
Okay.
Make the motion to approve?
Second that.
Just for the record, it's Janice Di Ambrogio that has put her name back in to serve on that district council on aging. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number twelve, approval of credit application with Old Castle Precast for fiber optics at the soccer field. Commissioners, as I talked with Christian and Barry, I think instead of entering into a credit application, we can just buy directly. I've talked with Seth. He seems to think that that would be a, a better way to go as well. So we don't have to sign their agreement. So I think we can just go ahead and.
I'll make a motion to table that one and we'll just move directly on a direct purchase.
Okay, we have a motion to table.
I'll second that motion. Unless, is it, is it proper to table it, Christian? Or should we just refuse to sign or to die it? Or what's the right way to do that?
You could, I, why don't you table it for now? It doesn't ever have to come back. And then if, if it turns out we absolutely have to do that, then we can just throw it back on the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion.
And a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Update for Ford Ridge, prescribed burn schedule for summer 2018 Bureau of Land Management.
As I mentioned earlier, gentlemen, I'm Stuart Bedke, the fuel specialist for the BLM stationed here in Price, Utah. Been in the position for about a year and a half, but I have several years' experience in the fire program. So the, the map there on, on screen now is the project area that was included in the NEPA document from a few years ago, which includes the area that we're burning. What you see in green are the, how we broke that down into units that were treated. Some of them were hand cut and put into piles. Some of them were cut and scattered. And there were a couple of them that weren't actually completed. By the time I got here and looked at the project, we determined that would be in the best interest of the land if we just went ahead and burned it instead of trying to burn piles that, due to the, the conifer encroachment within the Aspen stands that we need to burn it. And we'll go into some of those details next. So the primary, primary thing we're looking at is the reduction of conifer encroachment within historic Aspen stands and to reduce the catastrophic fire potential within the area. As, as you guys have seen in recent years, we're getting some of these bigger fires that really scorch the land and, and destroy soil and it makes for, makes for headaches in the future. We are also including sage grass habitat. We were able to get some funding through the sage grass committees to do this project and to include wildlife habitat, which will also in turn improve livestock habitat and opportunities there. This information just came to me a couple of days ago. We now have the oldest bristlecone pine in Utah. This tree here was already dead. They cut it, dated it. It was 1,380 years old when it died, and that was over 2,000 years ago. So that's also right on Ford Ridge. So that's another little point of interest for us that we're going to try and protect those when we do this burn. Logging was not really an option. We looked at helicopter logging due to the poor access, a large amount of dead dug for trees, just a poor quality of timber overall. The people we brought in had no interest in logging this. So this is a blown up map for the public here to see. We'll zoom in on it a little bit. On the right-hand side of the map, the upper right corner is Highway six. You see a small red line coming up off of that, and that's the road that goes up to Price Rec to give you a point of reference for where this is. And the, the radio towers, communication towers would be off to the bottom left of the map. So what you have in bright yellow are the areas we're going to introduce fire and just let the fire burn through those areas. There's a UTV trail that comes up Ford Creek, crosses through the creek and goes up the, the north aspect there. This winter, we went in, most of that area was cut and piled, and we went in there this winter and burned those piles a hundred feet on either side of that road to give ourselves a, a better fuels break. So when we do this broadcast burn, we have better success holding this fire where we'd like it. So some of the details that we're coming up, we prefer to light this in the late fall. That way, if we, especially if we have a storm coming within a few days, if the fire does get a little out of hand or whatever, the moisture coming in will, will help put that to bed for the winter. We're working on the trail improvement in there. We have done some improvement. We're looking at doing some more this spring. And then we're bringing in some hand crews to do some more treatments along the edges. The Bonneville Hotshot Crew will be coming down in late April, early May, and they'll be working along the edges to help soften those for the fire. And then it'll be just a matter of scheduling aircraft. We're going to do this as an aerial ignition. Due to the steepness, a lot of safety concerns, we don't feel good about sticking firefighters in the drainage to the south of Ford Creek. So we're going to do this as an aerial ignition. And then smoke impacts. With the elevation we're dealing with, we're not going to really see a whole lot of, if any at all, impact to the Sufco Mine. Helper will get a little bit of smoke impact in the evenings just due to the downwind drafts that come down the canyon. And we're, with the smoke impacts that we have to go through the state on, we won't be able to ignite it unless we have a clearing index of over 500. So that smoke will all easily go up over the highway and off during the main ignition. And again, it'll be a little bit residual at night, but we'll be monitoring that with UHP. Are there any questions?
I'm Vic Sackel. And we run our cows up in that area. And so is the one part, is that Deep Canyon going to the towers? Or is this all Ford Creek?
So Ford Creek is the main strip to the, to the left. And I, I wasn't aware of what the name is on that.
They call it Ford, or Deep Canyon or Dominique Canyon, if you look on the maps. Okay. And, because, and what time of the year are you going to be doing this?
So this is completely weather dependent. We need the fuels to be dry enough that they'll consume to the rate that we want them, but we don't want it so hot and dry that we nuke the whole site.
Because what they did in Ford Creek was excellent. I mean, they went and piled all that stuff up in it. And I mean, you need to take it right up there.
I've, I've been up there. It looks amazing. They've opened up. The vegetation looks great.
What they've done and, and that. And, but besides that, we need to do Fish Creek also. I mean, Fish Creek needs it worse, well, not worse, but as bad as Deep Canyon here. Because Deep Canyon, the trails are just covered up. I mean, to get our cows through there, I, I mean, it's just a, a killer. And so we need to, I mean, not only here, but the county really needs to look at Schofield up there and lower Fish Creek in that because.
We do have some projects through catastrophic fire.
You're going to have a scar just like Huntington Canyon has over there for eternity. And, and you talk about floods, you're, you're not going to be able to stop them.
Yeah. We, we do have a project through the Governor's Catastrophic Fire Committee. We've been working on a fuels break. It's on state land, so the BLM doesn't necessarily have their hands in this one, but it, it is creating some fuels breaks because we also have the railroad that goes underneath all that fuel. And if, if there was a large fire in there, the flooding would not only take out our watershed, but the railroad as well.
Is a lot of the fires that has started up Price Canyon is from the railroad, from the train itself. So you know, I mean, that's something you really need to think about hard.
There is great advantages to restoring our watersheds and, and helping them be healthy through vegetation manipulation because we've.
Because I know the fishing game shut Fish Creek down because they own the ground, you know, DWR. And, and they shut that down at one time. So we need you guys' backing to get it fixed, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, Vic.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I, I think this is a great project. Just don't let it get out of control.
That's, that's the plan.
Okay.
Barry, any concerns with our towers?
Is there any access issues during the burn?
No.
When you get ready to burn, will you please, is there a way to notify the county so that if Barry needs to access either prior or during the fire, we can coordinate?
Yeah, absolutely. It's in our fire plan. We have to notify the county on several fronts. Mr. Needles be notified, Rudy Sannival be notified, dispatch center be notified. And there's a couple others I can't remember, but there's quite a few county entities on the notification.
Hopefully the sheriff's office.
What do you want to know for?
You ever know. We want to search and rescue you up there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, review and possible adoption of a resolution 2018-2 declaring drought emergency in Carbon County. Commissioners, this is something we've done in the past. Last year, there was not so much need because we had ample water. But this year, we, with the low moisture, it's been requested of us. And several counties have also been passing similar resolutions in their counties. Justin, did you want to address this?
If you don't mind, just for a second to let everyone know. So the reason in signing a drought declaration, what it does is it gives farmers a opportunity if they have loss of crops to go to the Department of Agricultural, Department of Ag and take out low interest loans to replace the, their lost crops. So it doesn't per se do anything for the county itself, mostly the, those who are in the agricultural field.
I'll make the motion to approve this. I just lost my.
Resolution.
Yes, resolution 2018-02.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Item number fifteen, consideration of report and recommendations of Hill Subdivision Board of Equalization and possible approval of a resolution number 2018-3 adopting the recommendations of the Board of Equalization.
Commissioners, I, I can talk about that for a minute. We were required, in conjunction with the establishment of the assessment area and the assessment list for the Hill subdivision, we were required to set up a Board of Equalization in which persons who were going to be assessed under this special, special assessment area could come and indicate whether they believed their assessment was going to be equitable or not. We had two, two homeowners up there come and, and meet with the Board of Equalization. After meeting with them, the Board of Equalization, as you know from the last meeting, adopted a preliminary report that indicated that, that they felt that the assessment up there should be based on a per lot basis rather than a per owner basis. And so they adopted a preliminary report which was provided to you at the last commission meeting. By the way, the, the Board of Assess, Board of Equalization for the Hill subdivision assessment area was Commissioner Potter, County Treasurer Kay Colosimo, and County Engineer Curtis Page. So after they did that preliminary report, we noticed that it affected especially Dr. Byers and Mr. Howe who lived in the subdivision because they both had two lots, which meant they were going to be, well, Mr. Byers initially had four lots in the assessment area and Mr. Howe had two lots in the assessment area. So we informed them and let them know that this would be an impact on them because it would increase, they essentially be paying multiple assessments. For everybody else, though, it would, it would reduce the assessment amount that was to be paid. After meeting with them, we learned a couple of things. We learned that Dr. Byers had two lots that were outside of the subdivision itself, and we learned that Mr. Howe's other lot is a non-buildable lot in that it's not assessed as a buildable lot and it doesn't have a water connection and he has no plans to use it. So the Board of Equalization, we got some, we, we looked into it a little more and the Board of Equalization has revised its findings, and those findings are here. And those findings essentially say that the board recommends, as before, that each lot be assessed equally and separately, but that only the buildable lots within the subdivision be assessed. So what that does is it means there will be 18 lots assessed. And because Dr. Byers had two lots that are not in the subdivision, those two lots will not be included in the assessment area. They, they will not be assessed. And because doctor, and because Mr. Howe has only one buildable lot, only that one lot will be assessed. So what that does is it changes the proposed maximum assessment from $41,177 to $38,888. And that's a decrease for everybody except for Dr. Byers. However, Dr. Byers has come in and he has signed a waiver agreement wherein he has said that he waives his right to appear before the Board of Equalization, which he would otherwise have the right to do under the statute, and has agreed and has indicated that if you accept this report and adopt it, that he agrees to pay the assessment on the two buildable lots which he has in the subdivision. So the report will need to go out. If you adopt these, if you don't have any problems with these findings and adopt them in the resolution that's been prepared for you, the next step then is to send these revised findings to the two property owners that appeared at the Board of Equal. The next step then is to send these revised findings to the two property owners that appeared at the Board of Equalization. And they will then have fifteen days to make an appeal to you uh, to oppose, oppose your adoption of that, of those findings. Since, hopefully, since uh, for both those homeowners, the assessment amount has gone down. Albeit by not a lot, but still by approximately twenty-two, twenty-three hundred dollars. Uh, there's some benefit there, and uh, hopefully that will satisfy them, and they'll feel like they're being equitably and fairly assessed at this point. After the expiration of those fifteen days, you can adopt a final assessment ordinance that sets the assessment amount. And the uh, and the construction and the bidding for the project can proceed. Uh, we'll also, uh, as we send out these findings, assuming you adopt them, uh, which would go out tomorrow. We would also provide the homeowners with a form that would allow them to waive their right to the appeal. Which would allow us to get the uh, the procurement of a of an engineer, of a contractor going that much sooner and the design work to start that much sooner. So that's where we stand. The the findings are are here for you. They've been signed by all the members of the Board of Equalization. Uh, you can decide whether you want to adopt them.
Commissioners, I would uh, tell you that I'm I'm comfortable with the process that we've gone through and establishing a by lot ownership. And that that seems to be the fairest way that the road's benefit is providing access to each lot, not necessarily to each owner. And so um, I would feel very comfortable if we wanna make a motion and move this forward and see if we can get this project underway.
So was that a motion or was that a request?
I will make a motion and in that same motion to adopt resolution twenty eighteen oh three.
I'll second that motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
So for those in the audience, I know we do have some in the audience that are here wondering. Uh, the next step then is to, uh, as I mentioned, we'll send out those findings. Along with a letter indicating that they have the right to appeal those findings to you within fifteen days. And if they, if they want to waive that, they can, but otherwise, if they don't appeal within those fifteen days, um, that. That will be the assessment amount, and those parcels will be the ones being assessed. And uh, and we can proceed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Item number sixteen, report on motocross event held on March twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen.
Commissioners, um, just wanted to report back on an event. The promoter Kenny Kirkwood had a little message to share. He wanted to be here in person, but has to work until seven P M., so he wasn't able to get away. Um, he wanted to let us know that he had four hundred and fifty racers. Um, four hundred and fifty racers, individual racers, so not not for, not um. Not a lower number of racers having many iterations, but four hundred and fifty individual racers. Which is more than he's ever had at any race here in our area. He was very excited to share that he didn't have any negative feedback from anyone he personally spoke to. That the uh, race organization is happy and the racers um, have all said good things about it, and that the social media has been very positive. Um, also here we have Commissioner Hope's, your brother-in-law, who was in that race. I've asked him if he would just share a few words.
Kind of in the race. I think he got into what, second or third gear before his chain broke?
I'm Garth Fransen. Just, everybody's gotta name, name their name when they come up, right?
Right, thank you.
No, I uh, I participated in Ken's race. He he's hold some good events. This was a desert race, actually not a motocross, which expanded the outside of the track. It was about an eleven mile loop. We did, in the A T Vs, we did three loops. The pro bikes did five. We raced for about an hour and a half, uh, most leaders, and everybody trickled in after that. So it was, it was uh, pretty good. It's a little bit early, so we we had dust problems without the snow saturating the soil like we normally do. So it was, it was a pretty dusty race. They did the best they could at the track to to mitigate that with water trucks. The uh, um, the crowd was big. Uh, they were able to come and have a good time. The weather was pretty decent. It was not sunny all day, but it wasn't terrible. And the winds were pretty mellow, so it was, we got off on that pretty good, um, with good results. But, you know, the course was was challenging. It was a ton of fun. I had a great time. I spent quite a bit of preparation to to be in shape for that, and it paid off. And uh, and uh, you know, there was only two accidents, which, um, with the speeds that they're going, that's that's not great, but it's, it's not bad. They had uh.
I I'm getting a four accident from the doctor back here.
Really? Oh. I wasn't counting broken ribs. I wasn't aware of those extra two. So, but, you know, that comes with the territory a little bit. Four fifty-two, actually. That included everybody from us old guys down to the peewees. Um, they had small, small bikes and small riders on their own course. Uh, we had, there was some space where they made their own area to race out there. Um, this race is unique to other desert races, um, due to the fact that we utilize a motocross track, so we call it a grand prix. So we go around, we start on the track, we leave the track, we go out towards Pinnacle Peak and and all that. All those trails on the State Trust Land in the area were utilized. Um, so they, there's different branches that they can mix it up each year and have a a different course, uh, so it doesn't get boring. And then they come back onto the track and and then make the make the loop and leave again. However many times they have, they can pull it off in an hour and a half. So we we had a good time. It was uh, much appreciated that we have this facility out here to be able to utilize. And uh, he's got a couple more races, and and uh, Wild West has one coming up soon as a motocross as well, so.
So how far did you get?
I made two and, two and seven eighths laps.
Okay.
Then my chain came off, and that was it, so.
Wow.
But it was fun.
Anyway, appreciate your report.
Thanks for the update. Think we should note that this is an annual thing that Kenny does host out there, and it usually draws a big crowd. This may have been his biggest one, but years previous, it draws a lot of riders into our area. Yep, it's a great event.
And just to add uh, to the motocross, we've had a lot of interest from um, the people who groom the track, volunteers as well as employees. We are going to be bringing down, and I I spoke with Daniel to make sure that he didn't have any issues with this. Um, but um, bring down a fellow named Nick. In fact, uh, do you recall his last name? Did I speak with you about Nick Garth?
Yeah.
Nick Ware. He's he's a fellow that actually does a lot of work on other tracks around the state. In fact, he's worked on every track except for ours. And the purpose of him coming down, there's a. Okay. All right, well, we'll just put that on hold then. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Should should be followed up with that, that tradition, that track was designed by Dirtworks. It has had two revisions that I know of in in my term as a commissioner, as far as reworking that. And uh, they are nationally, internationally known for their work on motocross tracks. So I would be very careful in what we do, especially with sprinkling systems and the ability to groom the current motocross.
And just that there's a an ongoing need to always keep up the track with the jumps. Um, specifically to make sure that it is a safe track and that they can land safely. And so that that is always an ongoing effort, and so.
Yeah. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Thanks. Item number seventeen, review and possible approval of continued property tax exemptions. Seth Olvison. I caught you with your mouth full.
I'll make a motion to approve that exemption list.
I'll second that motion. It's the same list that we've reviewed pre- previously, right?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Um, item number eighteen, appointment of an evaluation committee to review proposals received. For the Economic and Tourism Development Consultant Services Request for Proposal. And appointment of hiring committee to select consultant. Christian, did you wanna cover this?
Sure, Commissioners, you've you've uh, I know that a uh, committee was already put together to evaluate the proposals of the um, consultants. Given that it looks like there's some, that some of you on that committee may uh, want to, well, not. It looks like there might be some conflicts of interest, um, or apparent conflicts of interest on the committee. Uh, specifically, some of those on the committee are um, uh, have been appointed by their supervisory, by their positions on the. On the county commission and on the Price City Council as being board members of the Association of Local Governments. And so. It, because you have a fiduciary duty to both boards, those fiduciary duties are competing, I think, when when we're talking about uh, getting a a hiring committee. Or when we're talking about choosing a, making a final decision with respect to hiring one of these consultants. Commissioner Potter's already declared that he he has a conflict of interest with the other applicant. So my suggestion to you to clean that up is to is to appoint some of the members on the committee that have already been de facto. Uh, the the committee's already been acting as as an evaluation committee on these proposals. And my my thought was, those on the committee who do not have conflicts of interest should perhaps act as the. They should be delegated the authority to make the hiring decision. So that the, so that those county commissioners who have a conflict of interest are not involved in the in the final decision. Uh, I think it's fine if you if you consult and and give your input on those. On, eh, even if you've got that conflict of interest, I think it's okay to to give your evaluation and your thoughts and your recommendations. But that the final decision of the consultant should be left to those who have not declared a conflict of interest. So really, th- this agenda item has two parts. One's the appointment of an evaluation committee. That's really more of a ratification because you've already set that committee up. But the second would be to appoint members of that evaluation committee to actually make the final hiring decision. And after I I mentioned my concerns to you, you were only too eager to, uh, I should say, uh, this has always been an open process. There's been no. Uh, everybody's been honest and upfront about uh, their involvement with different boards and persons. And uh, we, after speaking with me, I thought that it would be a good idea to put it on, and you, uh, you also agreed to do so. So that's my recommendation to you, that you uh, simply appoint members of the evaluation committee who do not have that conflict of interest to make the final decision. With respect to the hiring of a of a consultant.
And would you uh, feel it was necessary to do that by name?
Yes, yes, I think the, I think you should do that.
According with Christian's recommendation, I do have a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I would move that we appoint you, Commissioner Hope's, um, Ben Heaton and Gina Gigan, who have been participating on the hiring committee. To have voting authority on the decision of the election of decision for. Choosing whether or not to accept one of the applicants or to go out for republication and rehire.
I'll second that.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Should I abstain from that?
Um, no, I I don't think so. I think that's fine.
Okay, aye. Motion passes. Item number nineteen, uh, review and possible consideration of a lease agreement for new Seventh District Courthouse building between Carbon County. And Administrative Office of the Courts. I believe, gentlemen, that this might be the golden day that we can finally put to rest this agreement.
I agree with that. I've I reviewed it. They've made enough of the changes that I I felt was important, and I feel like the county's interests are protected in the draft we have. So I, from a legal standpoint, I'm satisfied with the agreement in the form that it's been given to us in this last iteration.
So am I.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second and a three or four month waiting period. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks for all your work on that.
It's fun when the, as a political subdivision of the state. Has to hammer out things with the state itself, huh? It's uh, kind of ironic, but that's that's how it turned out. But we got there. We got there.
Thanks for all your work, both of you. There's been a lot of time spent on that. Item number twenty, review and possible approval of an ingress egress and right of way, right of entry. Consent for Utah Abandoned Mine Reclamation Programs, Kennelworth Three Project. Commissioners, uh, this was sent to me by the Abandoned Mines Program. I forwarded it on to you and Christian as well. This is just simply them going in and working on a a mine that they've already reclaimed. There's, there's some issues with the reclamation work that has previously been done. They're simply asking for uh, permission to go through, the property that they're talking about is what's called the Ball Field. Um, up in Kennelworth, um, and they use that to access down into the area where the mine was at.
And they uh, you know, they're very, uh, they agreed to, if there's any damages, they'll take care of those, and uh, all they're asking is for the right to traverse the property. And I see absolutely no problem with allowing them to do so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the entry consent.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.